I'm sitting here at chair.
Five thirty?
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Five thirty. Please rise for the invitation.
Hello, everyone. My name is PJ Beaver. I'm the pastor of ministry is at Hope City Church. We're located off of Benita Beach, just on the other side of seventy-five, across from Midtown. And we're so excited to be a part of Benita Springs, the community. We're, uh, we've been around for two and a half years, and just excited to be here. I'm just gonna pray for wisdom as you all meet and make decisions. And so, thank you for each one of your service to our, our great city. Join me in prayer. Lord God, we thank you for the opportunity to be a part of this community. And we ask, Lord, for wisdom. We ask for discernment. And, Lord, that you would lead our, the leaders in this room as they make decisions for our community tonight. And we ask this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. The pledge of allegiance times three. One, two.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, city clerk, Lex Sheffield, please call.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Here.
Councilmember Purdon.
Here.
Councilmember Carr.
Yeah.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Here.
Councilmember Corey.
Here.
Councilmember Folic.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Here.
If they approve within a minute, I'd make a motion we approve in a minute.
Second.
A second. Any comments?
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Councilmember Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Here.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
Okay, I'm the mayor, and you're welcome here tonight. We have a special group of artists that, from the Benita Elementary School, that we're presenting, that have been selected by the tree advisory board. And there'll be awarded here very quick, very quickly. Now, any public comments? Any public comments?
On agenda.
On the agenda. Seeing none, I guess we'll move on to proclamations. Uh, Jack Brown is gonna present the proclamation of the, the artists from the elementary school of Benita Springs.
Good evening and welcome. My name is Arlene Hunter, city manager. Jack Brown is the chair and volunteer chair. So, he spends his time volunteering to assist. And I wanted to just share the, with you students, how important your role is in this process. Because you participate, that helps us retain our Tree City USA designation. And that helps us to get grant funds, funding for different parks and programs that we do throughout the year. So, you are a part of our process. So, thank you for participating, and thank you for being here today. And Jack's gonna, so, thank you. Just gonna be able to call each of you up, and we're gonna get some pictures with you, okay?
All right, so I'll call each of you up, and, but I do wanna echo your comments, some amazing artists. So, it's exciting to present these to you. Is Scarlett Gabriel here from, in kindergarten? Scarlett, okay, good. No worries. Natalie Murillo, first grade? Oh, there she is. Your work is amazing. So, I think everyone should stay up here.
No, no, stay here.
We, we also give a financial reward in here.
Oh, yes. There is a gift card in there. Uh, okay, the next one will be Yasmin Ramirez Hernandez, in second grade? Great job. Uh, Christian Gonzalez Segundo? Uh, Leslie Ramirez Hernandez? Okay, all right. And finally, Sherl, uh, Sherlin Mendoza Mendoza. Excellent work.
Okay, one, two, three, say tuckies.
Tuckies.
Tuckies or duckies?
Tuckies.
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 Is there, good?
Should council come in? Yeah.
Be careful what you wish for.
And there's a, there's a horrible accident down the road.
Yes.
Ooh.
Kids are so great. They are. Very brave people.
You're moving a little bit better here.
Like yours. A taki?
Spicy Dorito kind of thing?
Good job.
Congratulations. Really great job. My parents good?
Yeah.
Sorry, okay.
Well, not so good.
Yeah.
Good job.
My parents have gotta get a good picture.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Nigel was trying to pick his favorite. Just so you know. Just so you know, this one is my favorite.
Yeah, yeah, losing it, so keep it shorter.
I love their niggle.
When you're going to Navy, or the Army, or whatever.
We don't need the British Empire again.
Why not?
Very good. That's the future of Benita Springs, and keep the trees, keep the trees. Okay, now we have a public comment. We already went public comment. Consent agenda. Have anybody, we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Anything else on the consent agenda? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Okay, any, any further comments about the consent agenda? Yes, Jesse?
I just wanted to say, good job to Nicole.
You gotta bring your microphone in. We got it.
I just wanna say, good job to Nicole for the, uh, the transfer on the soccer complex, 'cause that is, uh, it's needed. So, if you, the one over at the YMCA, dilapidated isn't even the appropriate word for where it's at right now. So, that was a very good move, and I, I know that the teams will really appreciate that. So, it, it was a consent agenda, but it was still important. Thank you. Good job.
I borrow you, Pat. Oh, good. Now, are the city attorneys apprised already?
Yes, I have a, we have an interlocal agreement here with the supervisor elections. Uh, we have a current interlocal agreement, and from time to time, the supervisor asks for updates. This particular agreement, we, we provide some comments, but the supervisor's office, and Mike can go into it a little bit further, the supervisor's office is trying to have uniformity between all the cities where they, where they act and, and the role of conducting the elections. And so, uh, there's a little bit of difference with what our charter provides, and we've had some back and forth with the supervisor's office on that issue, um, because they may qual, they may act as a qualifying, uh, agent for the city during our elections. Our charter provides something is different. The, the clerk can give you a little bit of insight on what the supervisor's feeling on that, but, uh, given where we are, we think this is, uh, acceptable to move forward with.
Very good.
Motion to approve.
I'd like actually a little more explanation about what the difference is and the nuances of the change.
Since we have a motion, could we get a second to continue discussion?
With no discussion?
No.
No, no, just.
We can now have discussion.
Have a discussion, yes. Mike, is there any much difference?
Yes, so, where the current agreement indicates that the city shall serve as qualifying officer to accept qualifying papers and fees and perform such administrative tasks as necessary with the qualifying of candidates, the new proposed agreement, by default, assigns that duty to the supervisor of elections, unless the municipality provides written notice to the contrary. And attached to this item, there is a, a draft letter which, to the supervisor, from the mayor, notifying him of that, if that is indeed what the, the council chooses. You know, just to agree with, with Derek, I think that this is, uh, kinda the direction that the supervisor's going. The city of Cape Coral, now, uh, the supervisor provides qualifying duties, and town of Fort Myers Beach, and Village of Astero. So, it's something that, not at this point, at some point, this council will have to consider whether that is something you'd want to consider, the supervisor performing qualifying duties for your candidates here in the city.
Okay, now, does the, uh, the petitions, do they still have to go to the supervisor up in Fort Myers? They have in the past, had to go up there to get counted for the petitions.
Well, they will still have to do that. So, the supervisor, that's one of his constitutional statutory duties, is to certify petition signatures.
And that's coming up pretty quickly.
Yep. In fact, some candidates here in the city have already brought their petitions to the supervisor to be.
Okay, and also this year, they have to do a Form Six?
Yes. Yes, and, and that's separate from this, but yes. So, candidates must also file the Form Six. It's one of the qualifying requirements.
And that's, and that's before the qualifying period, which is in June, June tenth?
Noon, June tenth through noon, June fourteenth.
Okay, any other questions on that?
Well, it sounds like each board or each of the, like, MPO is also sorta said, we wanna combine, we want to unify the votes. And it's dwindling away the voice of Benita Springs in this. That's how I see it.
Not, and not now.
Well, this is.
We still have everybody elected by their district. I think you're talking about the county?
Well, I'm saying that there is, there's a move within the, I don't wanna call it deep state, but the second level, to sorta take over more and more duties and make the vote of council less and city manager less, and, and staff less.
That's your opinion. I don't see it that way, not in the city, but in the Springs. This is better, it's better for Mike to handle this than having to go all the way up to Fort Myers every time I gotta turn on a petition. Yes, Jesse?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To play devil's advocate and to kinda, uh, maybe make Laura feel a little bit better about it, Derek, as our legal representative, do you feel there's anything in this that, uh, does what Councilwoman Carr is alluding to in regards to our power as a body?
Um, not in the agreement in itself. The, the agreement rephrases a lot of things that are in our current, current agreement, which you have attached as well. It's, it's a little more nebulous on a number of items, and the supervisor has not provided any guidance to Mike what those details may be. I mean, they've kept some of the, of the very direct things about timetables for responding to stuff, but one of the, one of the issues, and I had sent a draft back, which took out the qualifying provision, uh, and that was rejected. And I believe what the supervisor's position would probably be is, as, when they came in previously to move our election date, they're trying to gain efficiency by having everything under a set of, one set of standard operating procedures. And it's easier for them to process elections in a more timely manner if they feel they can address every community the same way. What I would ask is for this, is I, I have no objections to the interlocal agreement, but at, once you've approved the agreement, I, I would ask you to take a separate vote on whether or not to have Mike continue in his role as the qualifying official for the city. Now, that, the, the forms still, you know, have to get processed by the supervisor, which is a unique, uh, ability the supervisor has, given that they have the roles. But there are, I could see very clearly the possibility of confusion if everyone is going to the supervisor at the outset to get qualified, and they start asking questions about how the city is different, and how they work, and how, you know, what the rules are with respect to science. Those kinda questions sometimes often go to the supervisor, but ultimately will get sent back to us. And it's probably better, I, I would think, I don't wanna talk for Mike, if those candidates come in, have a point of contact initially with the city, uh, and then the process still gets done through the supervisor, but at least they know, and they're not going back and forth causing that confusion. That, that would be my opinion on the issue. So, I would ask for a vote on which way you would like to deal with the qualifying portion afterward.
Okay. Also, would like to mention that illegally placing political signs is gonna be taken care of by Tony Backers, and the code enforcement are not gonna put up with people that wanna represent the people breaking the law. That doesn't make any sense to me. So, that's another aspect of it.
Mayor, if I may, one thing that, um, the city clerk and I have discussed is, since we're so far along in this election process, it would be very helpful to leave, um, the clerk as our qualifying officer now. If this is the direction that the supervisor would like to go, that's something we would want to bring in a proposal before the, the next election and discuss it with council and vet that. We, we understand that's the direction, it seems like many of our neighboring jurisdictions have done. We'd wanna weigh that out with what the council's desire was on that, and what it means for the candidates to do so, and the convenience that we provide by doing it here. Um, but for this election, I think the fact that the, the attorney has suggested, we, it would be helpful if we could get direction on that letter so that we keep this process moving forward, and then we'll consider what happens in future elections, if that's the direction they wish to go.
I'd like to make a motion to that effect right there.
Second.
Let's, let's deal with the primary motion first.
Yeah, and then.
Okay.
Okay, so, the first motion and second is to approve the interlocal.
Okay.
Councilmember Carr.
And then there's an amendment to that where we allow you to be the qualifying, maintain your role as qualifying supervisor.
For the two thousand twenty-four election cycle, correct? Is that?
At minimum.
For the remainder.
Amendment first, and then you'll vote on the primary motion. So, you vote on Jesse's amendment first, and then you'll vote to approve the interlocal, and that'll send everything off.
Okay.
Councilmember Carr.
Yes.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Councilmember Purdon.
Aye.
And now we vote on.
Main motion, which is the approval of the interlocal agreement.
Any questions?
And we have a motion in a second?
Yes.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Councilmember Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Well, congratulations. You got, you needed extra work. Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
All right, and that's it for me.
I said for you, city attorney, the, the, the city manager's items, please.
Thank you, Mayor Council. I do have several items to go over this evening. Um, first, if I could ask Ellie to come forward, Ellie McEwen. Um, we have received a request from Lee County to appoint a representative to the CDBGDR housing program, which is done countywide. I'm gonna have Ellie just give a very brief overview, but they have asked for a representative. Um, one of the folks that could qualify as a representative would be a city staff member. Um, our recommendation would be that it would be a staff member, and that would, it would be Ellie. But we wanted to give you just a brief overview who qualifies, and then let you confirm that with a vote.
So, so, good evening. Ellie McEwen, for the record. This is very similar to what you recently did a couple of months ago when, um, you recommended Mike Gibson to be on the Planning and Infrastructure Evaluation Committee. It's for the CDBGDR, um, grant program that's, is as a result of Hurricane Ian. The new evaluation committee is focusing only on new housing and, um, single-family and multifamily, uh, new construction. And so, um, the county is looking for folks who have housing experience. And that's why they, their preference is to have a staff member rather than, um, a person from the community.
I, I recommend Ellie make a motion.
Second.
Any comments? I, I, she seems to understand all this government work.
Fortunately or unfortunately, yes.
I'm glad you're there. Thank you, Lord.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Councilmember Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Um, and then at this point, I'd like to give you just a very brief update on our, um, communications with FEMA and the meetings we've been having. As of yesterday, um, the city staff has submitted packets of information on all one hundred and six identified sites. Um, we're continuing to receive feedback from FEMA on, on those sites, back and forth. We have yet to, uh, as I reported at the last meeting, we were verbally told that twenty-nine of those were complete and compliant. Uh, we've not, not received that back in writing, and as of now, we're not clear that they're compliant. There's different terminology being used. I was able to have a call with the District Four Director, Robert Simon, today. Um, he said there will be clarification coming to us on that, and that he is hopeful that, um, we can at least close the case on the ones that are considered, what, whatever adjective they decide to use as compliance would be given to us as soon as possible so that we don't continue to concern ourselves with reporting on those, and we can move on to the ones that we feel there's additional information that we need to provide to them. I have been advised that we have up until June tenth to continue to provide that information. The door will not close. So, if we are still having a conversation on June tenth, and there's a different, additional certificate or some sort of information we need to provide, we can still continue to do so. Um, your staff continues to work on this twelve to thirteen hours a day and through the weekend. So, um, community development staff is working on it. We also have two consultants diligently working on it. Um, so, at this point, uh, we also have a call with Senator Rick Scott again tomorrow morning. Um, your liaison, Councilmember Folic, will be on the call. Um, each time we've had these calls, we've been able to prepare questions and provide those to the senator, which we received two letters that we forwarded back. Additionally, we've been asked for requests for information from Representative Donald's office too, which we've provided. Um, I'm not sure, uh, where our neighboring jurisdictions and other submittals, but at this time, I did confirm with Robert Simon, so that he knew verbally that we have submitted information on, on all of the sites identified. We're now going to continue to work on a narrative that tells the story of how we've proceeded in this process since Hurricane Ian, including the code violations that we identified immediately past storm that have worked through our process, um, as well as those that have come into compliance, uh, either by demolition or providing for the proper building permit to, to code. So, um, we're gonna continue to work that process, and we'll have more information as, as we go along. The other item I wanted to bring up was, um, I received a call from the Trust for Public Lands regarding a grant application for ATTIP, which is the former RACE grant, which is the former BUILD grant, which the city had previously applied for, for East Terry Street. We received that funding through a different program. We currently do not have a, um, a competing grant application in that federal fund. Um, and so, the request was, is that, um, we consider being either a co-applicant or, or an applicant with, um, the Village of Astero, the Lee County MPO. And I believe there has been outreach, I don't know the confirmed answer yet, but there's been outreach to Collier County to, uh, their Transportation Department, Trinity Scott. So, we're, we're waiting on an answer as their participation. The other ask is if, if some of you may recall, um, this grant does require, um, a consultant to assist with the application. They're anticipating the cost around thirty-five thousand dollars, and they're asking for a cost share among all those partnering folks to share in that cost share. Um, you do have funding. It doesn't require a balance transfer. You have, you have funding within the CIP, which is what we previously used when we cost shared in the appraisal process. So, if it's the desire of council, I think I just need direction, that you're comfortable with that. That wouldn't require a vote. It's in my signing authority. So, I just wanted to confirm that everyone was comfortable with us participating. At this time, the ask is not to pledge the five million as, um, as a match, but if it does, we would need to provide that in writing, and I would need to come back to council for that.
I think we need, you, you got my approval.
You just want direction.
I would like direction, because I think this. I would like direction, because I think this is just an application process.
Go for it, go for it.
And I believe the, I do also need to address, so most recently, I think you all are aware, there's an event tomorrow evening at the Wonder Gardens. I wanted to confirm, on our liaison list, Councilmember Corey is the liaison to the Wonder Gardens, but during the lease agreement process, Councilmember Purdon was appointed as the lease liaison. So at this point, there are some asks from the Wonder Gardens in participation in meetings, possibly board meetings, also possibly public speaking events, where they would like a liaison dedicated and available to them for, you know, for potential opportunities. I know you will readdress this after election and liaison election time, but I want to confirm who that, because some of these might come up quickly, who you would like, just confirming that we have the, because we've had multiple people participate, but under sunshine, we just need, we just need to make sure we have one.
Is Jesse willing to continue?
So he'd be the alternate to Chris? There'd be, is that how you'd sort of set it up?
I think the, I think the concern is, and I'll even go back even farther, Councilman Carr was initially on the first, on the first round, when we started dealing with the renegotiation of the lease. Then it was, Councilman Corey was assigned the duties as the official liaison in general, and then we moved to Councilman Purdon for dealing with the renegotiation of the lease, and I believe there was even a request for tomorrow for the mayor to speak, and so to make sure that you guys are all on the same page, we'd just like you to pick one person to present tomorrow.
And also, it would be helpful if we could communicate with the Wonder Gardens who their one point person is, so that they don't, you know, reach out to other folks without your greens, your agreeing to it.
I'm cool too, because I always go back to you.
For the sake of continuity, it's my district, I feel much more comfortable that we have that continuity. Jesse's done a great job, and, you know, they're looking for continuity, let's give it to them.
If he's willing, let's have...
No, I'm willing, I mean, it's, I'm up to date with the most recent stuff, so I mean, I have no problem, you know, making sure everything is going how it should, and we can readdress it after the election, and if anybody else is so inclined to want it, then we can address that then, but I'd be more than happy if that's the will of the council.
Yes, Chris. Well, you know, I'll just mention that there are a number of board members of the Wonder Gardens that are members of Morning Rotary, so that I see them every Thursday morning, including Wendy, who's chair of the board, the Whites, Donna Fleming, and so forth, and so I would just, you know, it might, it would be easier on me to be able to say things to them, so, you know, that's the only thing I have to offer, is that I see these people once a week, anyway.
I mean, I'm not, I'm open to whatever. I don't want to say I don't want it, but at the same time, I mean, I understand, I'm up to date, and I'm cool with it, so, I mean, if we both want it, and then you do the events, or you can talk to them, I'm cool.
City Attorney, is that a sunshine violation of some sort?
If they were talking about, maybe what I was just asking Arlene, what the specific request for tomorrow had been, to have the mayor say a few words, if Jesse, having been involved in the renegotiation, wants to take the, saying a few words tomorrow, and then have Councilman Corey continue on as the regular liaison, we just need to make that clear to them.
No, Nigel has asked that he become the continual, no? Oh, okay.
What I just said was, it's my district, but Jesse's been involved, he knows all the people involved, Chris knows people involved, so I would just say between the two of you, I'm comfortable with either one of you.
I'm comfortable with Derek just said.
I don't think there's any objection to having a liaison and then an alternate, because it seems like there is going to be quite a few asks, there are media requests for quotes, and I think we just need to be understanding who the first person is to go to for that information, and then if they're not available, the alternate. But the issue is, is there will be asks to attend different meetings, there's probably going to be asked to attend, there probably will be asked for proclamation, different events that they're going to have, and it is helpful to have one liaison to, who they, for consistency, know who they're to call on, and for us to make sure that they're getting to the right person.
I was committed to making a statement, I'm not the liaison, I'm just going, I agreed to be there to congratulate everybody for getting this whole thing together. I'm not the, I don't want to be the liaison when other people...
And that is what we're trying to provide, a direct contact for them of who they should be approaching for each of these needs.
Just ask the question, Jesse, with dance season coming up here, the elections, are you going to have the time to commit to these meetings?
But you know what, but we just do it change.
I'm just asking Jesse a question.
Okay.
Can I just ask Jesse a question?
Absolutely. I mean, I can absolutely make the time for the meetings, I know it's important, so, I mean, I am absolutely good to do it. If Chris, you strongly feel you would like to do it, I am, I'm good with that as well. I will say, if there's, you know, if I'm asked what's going on, or if there's media requests and things like that, and I know what's going on, I'm going to say it, so.
I don't care.
That said, if everybody's good with that, I don't care.
I'm fine with that. City Attorney, is the board of directors of the Wonder Gardens under sunshine?
No.
No, okay.
No, but we cannot have two members of the city council attend their meeting, because there ultimately could be a decision made by this council on some future decision of the Wonder Gardens.
So at the meeting, so tomorrow's event, if this works for everybody, I will say how happy I am, I'm excited for us to move forward, I was excited to be part of the negotiation process, but moving forward, you know, I'm still here to reach out to, but your main point of contact would be Chris, and, you know, you guys can call him right if you need, but Chris will be at your stuff, and he's going to be the one who's ensuring that you're in compliance with the agreement that we made, so you guys aren't going to have me calling you, you'll have Chris calling you. So I will, I'm good with that, if that's what you...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you vote on it or not?
Longest debate we've had in a long time.
I think it would be helpful to have a vote, and if you want an alternate, this is the time to do that, because you currently don't have an alternate.
Chris does travel a lot, so Nigel, if you could step in with Chris, like, just in case.
I think you've been confused this whole time. So Nigel was never part...
Do you not, do you?
Yeah, I do, I do, because Nigel's not yet been part of the conversation, and Nigel actually made a comment and stated it should be me and Chris.
So he doesn't read the papers that he receives?
Okay, stop, okay, not your turn. You were seemingly confused, because he stated it, and then you were like, oh, okay, is that not, and then you came up with a whole nother thing, and then you're like, all right, I think it's great, maybe it should be you two. Okay, once again, we've had three conversations, none of them were the two of them. So back to where we were just at, in reality, right now, here and now, I said I would go, and I will relinquish to Chris, yet they can reach out to us if they need anything. There was no, and that was Nigel's wish, as the person whose district it is in.
I'll second that motion.
Relinquishing to these two gentlemen.
Exactly. So we have a, so we have a first and a second, I think we're good.
Who was the second?
Who seconded?
The mayor seconded.
The mayor seconded.
Okay. Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Councilmember Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
The last item I have is just informational item, is that I received a call from Representative Botana to utilize either the city hall or the city's recreation center for a town hall meeting. He is required to provide that on state letterhead to us as a request. I have not received that yet, but I just wanted to prepare you all that that request would be coming for the town hall meeting sometime next month, is what I understand.
This is for the single-member district issue?
That was the topic that was provided to me.
I'm fine with it.
For disclosure, I reached out to the rep, and I just, the conversation was simply is going to be, just so that we aren't sideways with the county, are you 100% sure you want to have it here? If you 100% want to have it here, great, but just know that, you know, that isn't us cosigning on single-member districts, that's us saying, yes, of course, use our building, we'd be happy to, we just don't want to piss the county off at the same time, so. Plausible deniability of, we will talk to the county ahead of time. If he's dead set, he wants to have it here, we'll be happy to have him, but then we'll call the county and be like, hey, he has the right to use the building, we're not going to stop him, but this isn't our council saying this is what we want, because we know the commissioners don't want it. So it's like, we're in a bad spot, because the commissioners don't want it, the state reps do want it, we need money from both of them. So for us, Switzerland is probably the best place to be.
Okay, I'd recommend the rec center because of added parking.
Agreed.
Agreed.
We will work through the logistics of that, I just wanted to prepare you, because there is still a need for the letter to come on, letterhead request, so.
Yes, Fred.
The rec center has terrible acoustics.
So do you. Can you move up to the microphone, Fred?
Maybe my acoustics is a heck of a lot better than the rec center. We all met there, we know how bad it is. That's not a good place for a town hall. That's my comment.
Well, I just suggest we leave it up to staff to work it out.
Well, or we find him another place. I could probably get him to Presbyterian Church, I think.
Or Hunter's Ridge?
But I don't know how many people he envisions having into it.
Well, let us get more information, let us understand what the size, because depending on how large a crowd, the parking could be challenging here at city hall, which the parking would be better at the rec center, but the sound system might be more challenging there, so let's, I just wanted to make you all aware of the request is coming.
This is not immediate, this is not...
Correct, we've got time, and there's still not, there's still not a date set, so we could likely bring it up at the next meeting, if we have a letter request.
Very good.
Anything else?
That's all I have for now.
That's all you have tonight, okay. No recovery, Ian recovery?
I believe I covered that with the FEMA update, and then the CDBGDR request.
Okay, very good. Reports, how about, Fred, you got any report tonight? How about Nigel?
Yes, sir, just a follow-up to Arlene's comments as far as our calls with Senator Scott. I think it's really important that people realize, everybody's seeing in the newspapers that they extended the deadline by 30 days. The city of Benita Springs did not need that extension. We had our paperwork in on time, so people should know that, that our staff was prepared, even if we hadn't gotten the extension. The second thing is that Senator Scott's on these calls with us, and he takes questions. He doesn't have his staff handle him, he does it himself, and it's, he's made it very clear to FEMA that he's going to continue to request accountability from them on, and that they memorialize some of these requests and statements that they've made, which is certainly important to our staff. He made it very clear in his letters, I think everybody read them, but the public should know, his letters state clearly that anything that they're doing will be based upon regulations in place at the time of the event, not what's better going forward, and I think that helps us a lot. I think Senator Scott, Congressman Donalds, and Representative Botana are all comfortable that the city of Benita Springs and our staff have performed as was mandated by FEMA regulations at the time, and I think it's really also important that we recognize the number of homes that are on our list. I believe I asked Arlene, but it's about 12,000 homes that are in the floodplain that would be affected, and, John, can you help with that? Over 10,000?
It's around there.
Okay, we're in the thousands, correct?
Yeah.
So bottom line is, we're talking 120, we were at 121, now we're down to 106, and I'm starting to get my head wrapped around the fact that, didn't we really perform? We're talking about 106 homes, of which 29 may already have been taken off the table. So I don't want to say we're going it alone here, but I know that our staff and our city's done their job. TDC, I don't have a report, because the meeting's next week, so I, well, you know about that the next week.
Chris, would you like to add to that? No, I'd just like to congratulate Laura Taylor and our staff on the 25th anniversary celebration last Saturday.
Amy, her side too.
I was in, I was in charge of making sure that all people that bought beer from the Rotary Beer Sales were properly aged. I sat in a chair and made sure my wife had the armbands to put on, and I noticed no drunks at the Rotary Beer Wagon or buying beer, so it was a well, it was a well-attended event. So I wanted to thank Laura for all the work that she and her staff did. That's it. Do you have any idea how much money the Rotary Club took in? I'll find out tomorrow morning at the Morning Rotary Meeting, I'll probably have an estimate. Thank you.
Mayor, I'm sorry, I wanted to add one thing to that, is during the event, the announcer was able to announce every single person who has served as either mayor and/or district member in their district, that was one part of the announcements that occurred. I would like to ask that in the future, we'll have more information coming on this, but the second meeting in December, we'd like to move, that's typically a morning meeting, to the evening, and prior to that, we'd like a reception, where we'll be able to show the 25th anniversary video, and invite all past council members and mayors to attend, and past city managers to attend, and that way, we can have a little reception to celebrate the 25th birthday, since it is December 31st as the date, so.
Thank you.
December 31st.
Yes, is the actual anniversary, yes.
Better called Rotaries.
And Jamie, Jamie, you got anything to add today?
No, just agree with Chris, it was a, it was a great, to celebrate, Benita was a lot of fun, everyone looked like they had a great time, agree. No drunks around, so that was a good thing, and, yeah, it was a lot of fun, and thank you to all the staff and volunteers.
Very good. Jesse?
No, I'd just say, along the lines of what Nigel said, not only has the city been so on top of this FEMA stuff, you know, of every property that we have listed that we're currently working on, we as a city have already submitted paperwork on each and every one of them, so now really, we've volleyed the ball back into their court, and we're waiting for them to hit it back, so we are as on as we can be, and regionally, I would say we're probably the best. Also, with Celebrate Benita, excellent event, very good job, Laura, staff, LCSO, great job, when you have that many people and we don't have any issues, that says something, so I appreciate it.
Thank you. Have Laura Carr, please.
Okay, so I had a Horizon meeting this week, and they talked about artificial intelligence, it's happening, it's coming, and they've made some strides in different ways, but it's also a little scary, but that was Horizon's, you know, sort of gist is, by 2025, AI will be here. I got stranded on the road with a 12-year-old miniature Greyhound that could only go four blocks, so I must thank the Collier Sheriff's Department, because I said I would, and the Coller County Water Works people, and a UPS driver who turned around and provided water. And then Rick Scott, I actually happen to have a happenstance meeting with, and he really is behind us, and he's there for us, and we don't have to worry, he's in for the next six years, but we'll get this done way before that. And then the Pasadena funeral in Wake was amazing. I tell you, the Pasadena is just, are full of courage, strength, I couldn't believe it, I mean, what they did. So the daughters at the Wake, they in tandem walked together, because you know how, women know this about shoes and marble, and they, together, and then they each read one of the readings, and if you're a Catholic, you know how difficult those names are to say, but they held it together, and then, I didn't know, there's an older daughter, and her sons, I think Emmanuel and Stefan, they brought the gifts down, and it was beautiful, found out that Jay, Don, Pasadena, was one of five, but a twin, and his sister was there, and she's like, we call them Jay. And his sister was there, and she's like, we called him Jay, and he was a hoot. And so, she went on a little bit about that. And then, the, the oldest daughter spoke, and she said, you know, my dad watches Letterman, so I'm gonna do the top 10 Letterman. And so she ended with like an up note, and it was beautiful. And, I mean, everyone was in tears, but then laughing, and it was really a wonderful, wonderful event. So, the Pasadena's had grace and courage and resiliency. So, all our prayers to them. Thank you.
Thank you. The celebration in the park Saturday was outrageous. Thousands and thousands of people. I've waited 25 years to see a party like that. What a wonderful crowd. Everybody happy, behaved, no problems, no fights, no nothing. It was great. The band was fabulous, and we're still not done with 25 yet. We still got to December, we're gonna celebrate the end of, end of the year, or 25. So, thank you all. Public comment? Nobody, public comment? Come forward. Anything else from council? We're adjourned. Thank you.